This conference will now be recorded.
Call the Wilmer City Council meeting to order for May 17th, 2021. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Blaueman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda as presented?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ask.
I was wondering if we could add to the agenda a report from Chief Veltz, if he could give us an update about K-9 training at the Lakeview Apartments?
We can add that as item number five.
Thank you.
We'll do that right before the consent item. Anything else for the agenda for this evening? Since in hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made by Fagerly, second by Nelson. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Blaueman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we would ask for an update from Chief Veltz or someone from staff in regards to the training that was planned for the Lakeview High Rise in conjunction with Caneyway County and the HRA. Chief Veltz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, members of the public. In regards to the letter that you all received in an email from the ACLU, I'm extremely disappointed in the misinformation and the implications that the ACLU placed in the letter along with their associated social media posts and contacting news media outlets. We were not contacted before the ACLU sent the letter nor had any questions or concerns from the community directed to us to that time. The Wilmer Police Department works very hard to provide fair and impartial law enforcement to all community members and to continually build positive relationships with those we serve. Any K-9 training, demonstrations, and outreach to residents there were still in the planning stages when the ACLU sent the letter. What I can say now is no K-9 training or other law enforcement training has taken place at the Lakeview Apartment Complex to date. No training exercises will be conducted at the Lakeview Apartment Complex while this matter and the concerns raised are under review. At no time was it the intention of the Wilmer Police Department for this training to focus on individual residents of the Lakeview Apartment Complex, their guests or occupied units of the complex. And the city will review the concerns raised about this program by the ACLU and respond directly to the ACLU per the city attorney.
Chief Veltz, I just want to commend you and your staff for the good job you do in community outreach. You're always looking for ways that in which you can interact with our public in a positive manner. I know that this letter is as concerning to you as it is to myself and the council members. And thank you for that update. Councilmembers, is there anybody who has any questions for Chief Veltz? At this time, I have no questions for Chief Veltz.
Chief, is this something you can continue to keep us updated on as this proceeds?
Absolutely, yes, I will keep everyone updated on this.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions?
I have one. I just want to thank our police department because I know you're facing a lot right now. The whole world is crazy and and you guys do a great job. And I would hope that when news like this comes out, we would first find out the facts before jumping to conclusions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. At this point, I have consulted with Councilmember Fagerly. And at this point, I will have Councilmember Fagerly take over to preside over the meeting. I will still be in attendance, but I will not be the facilitator of the meeting. I am unable to be there in person, and I think it's better to facilitate a meeting in person, so I've asked Councilmember Fagerly, as the mayor pro tem, to do so. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Clerk Thompson, did we go over the consent items?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of May 3rd, special city council minutes of May 4th, special city council minutes of May 6th, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of May 10th, preliminary overview of the TIF plan for Suite Livin', accounts payable report of April 29th through May 12th, application for exempt permit from Pheasants Forever, Caneyway County, number two, application for exempt permit from West Central Ducks Unlimited, a resolution for the consideration of start time for city council meetings, a resolution for the consideration of fees charged for services, permits, licenses, and rental rates, a resolution for consideration of nutrition site services at the community center for council's acceptance, the building inspection report for April, the charter commission minutes of December 10th, 2020, and for council's information, fire and police department statistics for April 2021.
All right, thank you. Is there any items that would like to be polled by anybody? Councilmember Ask?
I'd like to poll aye.
Aye.
I.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. Also, E and J.
E and J? Anyone else? All right, we need a motion to approve the consent items except for E, I, and J.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion and a second? Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Blaueman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right. Councilmember Ask?
This is maybe just a very quick question. It's 6 o'clock. I know when the poll came out, we were given the option of 6, 6:30, and 7. There'd been some conversation before the poll that perhaps we could meet before 6. I'm just wondering if 5:30 was something that was ever discussed? And maybe Mr. Grammets, you could speak to that, or is there an option before 6 o'clock that would work for all of us?
I do remember there was a conversation about earlier, but if memory serves correctly, I thought there was one, you know, council member that 5:30 was very tight for them to attend at 5:30, but, you know, as the survey results show that all the council members said they could make 6, but if they want to go at 5:30, that's fine too. It just was that was the end of one council member's workday and anything around that time, I thought I heard was tight for them to get here. But that might be, I think it was Councilmember Butterfield was the individual that had spoken up at that point.
Councilmember Butterfield, well?
Yeah, 5:30 is tight.
That's, so, keep it at 6 then?
Yep.
Okay. Further, Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. I was gonna pull this item too. I know that we had a unanimous vote for 6 o'clock. Two questions. I'm really concerned about our ability to get all of our work done. I think tonight is an example of, not sure what time we'll get out of here, and the importance of each item on the agenda. And so I am concerned that 6 o'clock is not early enough and twice a month is not early enough. I'm willing to try it. But I've already taken some concerns from some people concerned how we're going to do this. And I think either we get the material earlier or we have to find another way to do it, but when we were elected, we all committed to making time to do the business of the city. And so I will express a concern about that, willing to try 6 o'clock. The second thing is listed on here. It said, "A public hearing will be advertised for June 7th." Do we need to do that? Is that what we're doing next if we agree to change it to 6 o'clock? All right.
All right. Further questions? So 6 o'clock, it will be. All right. Councilmember Ask, you wanna file?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second. Got a motion to file this item? We have roll call?
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Blaueman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right. Item E. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. I think anytime we're talking about a TIF, it's good to review it. I wasn't quite sure. The recommended action says, "For information, seek feedback and support for continuation of TIF creation process." But the primary issues, alternatives, talk about recommending continuation or declining information or requesting more information. So I thought it would be good for us to walk through what was presented, what's in here, and what we're being asked to do.
Dr. Ramstead.
Mayor Pro Tem, council members? Thank you. Yes, for council consideration is preliminary information on proposed 15-year tax increment financing district for Suite Livin', multi-family housing project located at 1209 24th Street Northwest in Wilmer, which is across from the Ridgewater College. TIF will be used to offset costs of site prep, utilities, stormwater controls, paving, and lighting. Total project costs are about $9.3 million. And the project will be using existing infrastructure. Staff are using TIF administration fees to enable Baker Tilly to assist in the TIF creation. Staff have also been working with the developer to create a mutually agreeable management maintenance plan in response to a number of concerns that the department has had related to responsiveness to maintenance and snow removal. And so that would be part of the TIF agreement and would be contingent on them receiving future TIF reimbursements as the life of the TIF continues. After this introduction of the TIF proposal, and the reason why we brought it to council is that we will be sending out notices to the county and to the school board. And we didn't want to do that until bringing it to council, and we don't have the committee structure, so that's why we're here. I have Tom Dennoy from Baker Tilly on the line, and he would like to give a brief overview of the process, if you don't mind.
Good. No, go ahead. Welcome.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council. My name is Tom Dennoy. I am with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors. Is everybody able to hear me okay?
I believe so, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Included in the packet tonight was a presentation, kind of, that provides an overview of what is tax increment financing, and then it talks a little bit about the project. I'm not gonna belabor everybody's time tonight and go into every detail of the presentation. Mostly wanted to include it as background information, so everybody was avail, you know, so it was available to everybody, you know, as they were evaluating the project going forward. So we're just gonna hit a couple highlights as to what is tax increment financing and then what really would be the next steps for this project. So tax increment financing is a method of capturing the future tax base growth from the new development. It captures that new incremental growth in property taxes and it uses those to pay for public improvements. And there's a fixed term for the capture, then ultimately that new development's added to the tax base. The purpose for TIF, and I don't know if the slides are available to everyone in front of you, I'm looking at the second or the third page of the slides under the title of tax increment financing. And the main point I wanna hit here is TIF is a gap financing tool. The purpose for the utilization of TIF and the philosophy behind its being enabled to be used by statute is it's a lot, it's a tool to allow projects that would not otherwise happen to occur. One of the fundamental findings with any use of tax increment financing is the underlying but-for finding or analysis. So it's the finding that but-for the use of the proposed tax increment financing, the project would not occur. So that's one of the many statutory required analyses that will be completed as we go through the process of creating the TIF district. And there's a whole statutory process that's outlined and required to be followed as it relates to the creation of a TIF district. So we're really at the very beginning of that process tonight. But that process is laid out by statute, requires that certain notices be provided to the county commissioner for the affected area, and then 30 days prior to the proposed public hearing, a copy of the TIF plan has to be sent to the county and the school district as well. So we wanted to make sure that we brought this in front of you to get initial impact, initial insight and thought as it relates to the project before that information started going out. Included within the packet was a schedule that lays out the various steps that are proposed to be taken for the creation of the district as required by statute. And you'll see on that, on that schedule, that there are two different points at which this project would be back in front of the city council for further analysis and further comment and discussion with the city council. The next meeting that this would be back in front of the city council is proposed for Monday, June 21st, at which point in time, if the city decides to move forward with the project, you would adopt a resolution calling for a public hearing on July 6th. And then that public hearing would be held again on July 6th at the new 6 o'clock time. So that publication would not be submitted to the paper until, for a publication date of June 23rd. So that notice has not gone out yet. You would decide, if you so choose to proceed with the project following the June 21st meeting, we would then submit that notice to the paper for the public hearing. And then again, you could take action on the approval of the TIF plan if you so saw fit after the public hearing at the first meeting in July. So this is really kind of an introductory conversation as it relates to TIF and as it relates to the project, knowing that there's gonna be significant review and analysis as it relates to this project and the drafting of the TIF plan, as well as an analysis of that but-for finding that will be brought back to the city council to ensure that those statutory questions and frankly, good public policy questions are being answered as to if TIF is necessary for the project and if it's warranted and if the amount is a reasonable amount. So those are all very good public policy questions, and they're also things that we'll be further analyzing and bringing back to the city council for your review and discussion. So as it relates to TIF districts, I'm gonna jump to the types of TIF district slides or slide within the presentation. TIF districts can be created based either on the conditions of the existing property. So those are the renewal and renovation and redevelopment districts. So those districts can be created for areas that have concentrated developments and heavily lighted buildings or structurally substandard buildings. So it's the existing conditions on those buildings allow that area to be eligible to be created within a TIF district. And then the post-development use on those properties can be any type of development. It doesn't have to be one specific type. That district is eligible based on the existing condition of the property. For a housing TIF district, it's not relevant to the existing condition of the property, but it's the end use of the property. So a housing TIF district is eligible to be created if the end development is is willing to meet certain income restrictions set aside, and I'll talk about those in a minute. And then similarly, economic development is a type of TIF district that can be in place or created based, again, on the end use of the property. So in an economic development district, it's based on if a manufacturing warehouse distribution type facility is being created. That is the eligible factor for the creation of that TIF district. On the right of that column, you can see the maximum statutory duration potential of the districts ranging from 25 years down to eight years for economic development. And the one thing to note with statute is it references eight years in the case of an economic development district. All these terms are the number of years from the first receipt of increment. So technically, a housing district is in place for up to 26 years. There's no obligation that the district is in place that entire time. This is just simply the maximum duration eligible under statute. There's a couple slides that talk about what we can use TIF for. It's largely public improvements, infrastructure, site work, ground and down type of improvements. There's a slide that talks about how the TIF district is created. I think we already hit on that. Again, it's a statutory required process that's outlined within the schedule that was provided also within the packet. There is a chart that shows graphically how tax increment revenue is generated. Essentially, it's the future local property taxes that are generated by the new project over and above the existing level of taxes that are generated by the project that are able to be captured as tax increment revenue and redirected to help assist the project. At the end of the term of the district, that new value comes online as general property tax base. TIF can be financed one of two ways. The most common way is on a pay-as-you-go basis, and that's what's being proposed here. The tax increment revenue would be generated on an annual basis, collected and used to reimburse the developer for costs that they would initially be occurring out of pocket and upfront themselves. So there's really no risk under a pay-as-you-go process. Under the other, the other avenue for funding projects is tax increment bonds. It's fairly uncommon, though it is done. It's less common because it's a riskier proposal for the city. When the city issues debt, if the future tax increment revenues come in less than projected, that risk profile is then on the city. So the majority of tax increment projects we do are on a pay-as-you-go basis because there's zero risk of future TIF revenue coming in as projected from the city's perspective. And then I'm just gonna jump to the housing district qualifications. So housing districts are eligible to be created if the end development is willing to meet one of two tests. These tests are, again, are defined by statute. So the first test is either that 20% of the units are set aside for persons with incomes equal or less than 50% of the area median income. Or the other test is 40% of the units are set aside for persons with incomes equal to or less than 60% of the area median income. So that's one of the requirements, that is the requirement that allows a project or housing project to be eligible to be created within a housing TIF district is that the developer has to agree to maintain that set aside of units and the income restrictions associated with those units to ensure that those units are being created and set aside. With this proposed project, the developers intending to meet that 40% test, so 40% of the units would be set aside for persons with incomes equal to or less than 60% of the area median income. And then the proposed project, I think Mr. Ramstead hit on most of it. It's approximately 72 total apartment units split across four potential new buildings, approximate development cost of $9.27 million. And the tax increment revenue projections that we prepared are very preliminary, but we utilized a post-development taxable market value of $100,000 per unit to prepare those estimates. And then the final slide, you can see what the proposed tax increment revenue would be on an annual basis over what we've, what we're initially looking at as a 15-year duration of the TIF district to comply with the city's current policy. So again, just jumping to the last slide, this is the beginning of a public approval and review process. So it takes approximately 60 days. There's certain statutory required steps that we have to take. We wanted to inform you of the district, of the proposed district and this proposed project in advance of starting that process to get initial feedback, knowing that, again, we will be coming back to the city council on two different dates between now and the public hearing to get further review and insight from the city council. So with that, I'll turn it over for any questions.
I'd like to add a couple things. Thank you, Tom. First of all, in the housing, it's not only housing that require, a housing TIF district that requires affordable housing. There is a waiver that can exempt them from that requirement. There's also a redevelopment site TIF that does not, which is like Block 25, which does not require the affordable housing component. So there are instances when you can not have that particular component to the TIF. So we have the owner on line two, and so before the owner goes any further down the road with the TIF development, we're just seeking feedback and support, general support to continue the process in consideration that the developer has been here before.
Is there any questions? Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, Dr. Ramstead, and thank you, Tom, for your synopsis of this program. Just for the council's knowledge as well as public knowledge, is it fair to say that projects requiring TIF financing or local subsidy, those are projects that are, once the project's initiated, that really unlike an unsubsidized private project, they're open to, I mean, their financials are fully reviewed by the city and by, I mean, they open up their financials to show us what their costs are going to be, what their expected revenues are going to be. And also a higher level of oversight from a city standpoint, is that fair to say for not only the duration of the approval time span, but during the actual TIF financing period? Gives the city a little bit more oversight, and I wouldn't necessarily say control, but there are control measures in place in order for them to maintain compliance. Is that a fair?
Absolutely. The entire, a lot of people don't understand that a lot of apartment buildings are LLCs. They're little mini businesses, and so they have performas. And so that entire performa is evaluated. And then in the TIF agreement, you can come up with any, it's like a contract, you can come up with any things that you and the owner can agree to to meet the execution of the TIF. So, you know, the TIF, you make the TIF happen in numbers, but then the agreement makes it happen in a mutually agreeable manner. So, and that's where the property maintenance and snow removal agreement comes into play.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Is there a TIF district there right now? It's gonna be a new?
I don't think so. Tom? No.
Okay. You'd like to file these?
Dr. Ramstead, I know we voted on this once before. I don't remember the timeframe of that, but you're asking us for, do you have a suggestion for, to accept this or support it, or what are you asking for?
Yeah, I'm just looking for getting a gauge of general support. I mean, if it's absolute no way, we don't wanna, we don't wanna do this TIF for this housing project. We would like to know that now, early on, so that the owner does not pursue this further with additional costs. And they can make appropriate plans to pursue it some other way. But I think, you know, the market is extremely hot. We have an extreme deficit in housing. And I personally believe that housing, the lack of housing or the lack of maintaining a balanced market between supply and demand is one of the reasons why Wilmer has stayed at 20,000 population for so long. So my personal perspective is that we should take advantage of this hot market and support development as much as we can. We have a ceiling of 15% of taxable capacity, so it's not like we can do this forever. And, you know, I think you're gonna do both. You're gonna do the industrial and business sector, but you also have to do the housing because they need the workers. So you need to really pursue both at the same time with simultaneous strategies.
Okay. So do you know if the school district declines it or the county declines it, or are they still going ahead with it?
No, we're gonna send notices after this meeting, and we, the city actually controls the TIF. We just notify them, make them aware of it.
They have to approve it?
I don't think so, Tom.
If I could, yeah, if I could jump in, they do not have, under Minnesota statute, approval authority as it relates to the creation of the TIF district. They are provided a comment period, so they get 30 days to provide their comments as it relates to the creation of the TIF district. But there's no approval authority from either the county or the school district. One important thing to note as it relates to school districts is a portion of the school district's tax revenue comes from the referendum market value-based taxes, and those are actually outside of the TIF revenue capture. So the school district will actually benefit, they won't benefit 100% of what they would get if this development occurred outside a TIF district. But a significant portion of their taxes is the market value referendum-based taxes, which they will actually benefit as it relates to this project from that portion of the taxes. So it's not 100% of the taxes, but it's certainly a significant portion of the taxes that they will still benefit from.
All right, thank you.
I would make a motion to receive the information and support the continuation of the TIF creation process.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to continue with this TIF project? Any other questions? Clerk Thompson, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Blaueman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Vagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Councilmember Nelson, number J.
The last one, it looks like we're increasing some fees, and I thought it would be good for us to know, to have staff present that with what fees are being increased and kind of why.
So who's going to take this? Mr. Okens or Sean? Pardon?
You can make me sad about that. I'm not a day over.
Well, some of the fees are in your department, so, and Rob too. You can tag team.
All right.
Welcome.
Mayor members of the council, with the fee structure that we have for park and recreation, shelters and ball fields and everything, we did discuss this at the Park and Rec Board meeting, especially with all the improvements that are happening on at Robins Island. We looked at the Four Seasons Shelter and what that rental fee would be. So as a conclusion from the Park Board, we decided that to be a $130 rental fee. Kind of not knowing when the shelters aren't going to be done at Robins Island, we kind of kept with the same structure. One thing that we've learned that if, if you make a big jump, you're probably going to get ridiculed by it, so we're going to make little steps all the way through it. When I did review it this afternoon, I did see one error in the ice rental. The ice rental should be at 155, not 150 per hour.
So it's going up $10 an hour?
It's actually was at 150 this past year. It's going up to 155. So we do it every two years of an increment of $5, and we've notified the users of that. Anything else regarding with Park and Rec?
It looks like with the equipment, you've changed some fees around. Bleachers, but not moving, or?
I'm not, I'm not too sure on that one. I'm guessing it's because we don't rent the three and the five-step bleachers anymore. We rent out the towables bleachers that we have. So if someone needs to use the bleachers, that we can just basically pull up, drop them down, flip them over, there's going to be a fee for that.
It looks like most of them, I mean, there's some for the fire department and the police department, but how do we compare with other communities on our fees?
I would say, you know, of course, when you get closer to the metro, the fees are going to be higher. Like our ice rates are fairly reasonable compared to everyone else in the area. They're actually probably on the lower end of it. You know, programming-wise, we're right there with everyone else. So we're not, we're not too high and we're not too low, right in the middle.
Anything else on the Park and Rec side?
I don't think so.
Okay. Anything on Public Works?
I think there was only one fine item there.
Okay. Sean?
Mayor Protem, members of the council, I did look through, and it looks like we changed snowplowing of sidewalks from 60 cents to a dollar a foot. I think that's the only change I can see under Public Works. Any questions on that one?
I don't believe so. So I see there's a couple of gentlemen from the towing. Are you here for anything in particular?
We're here observing, I believe there's a public hearing regarding the, yes.
Okay, no. I was just wondering if they changed the rates for towing or?
Actually, they did.
We can bring him up too.
All right. Anything else?
Nope, I'll, I'll go with that. So I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to establish the fees for services, permits, license, and rental rates.
Second.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any other questions? Roll call, Clerk Thompson?
Councilmember Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Blaueman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Vagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, thank you. Now we'll have the public hearing ordinance authorizing land sale to Number One Development Company LLC. Mr. Backman, are you taking this, or is Mr. Ramsden?
I'll start it off.
Mayor Protem?
Introduce him.
I need to abstain from this, so I'm just going to step to the side.
Okay. All right, proceed, Dr. Ramsden.
All right. Honorable mayor, council members, on May 20th, I made, I'm sorry, on May 2020, the Wilmer City Council established the Renaissance Zone, a new zoning overlay encompassing the central business district and adjacent areas. The last of the Renaissance Zone incentives were adopted around Christmas time of 2020, and the new district is a five-year pilot program intended to encourage economic development in the poorest census tract of Wilmer. This district offers greater flexibility relative to zoning requirements otherwise imposed by the underlying zoning districts, and is regulated by Section 12 of the zoning ordinance and defines the geographical boundaries within which development incentives are targeted. Number One Development Company, who's also on line, would like to acquire the city of Wilmer's west half of Block 25 as part of the land needed for their proposed multifamily housing complex, fronting U.S. Highway 12 and located in the central business district and within the newly created Renaissance Zone. The city property is currently being used as a parking lot that has been observed by staff to be more than 60% empty during peak business hours. The development has already spent considerable time and money performing initial due diligence, development of initial project design, and negotiation of purchase agreements with the private property owners on the east half of Block 25. The developer has significant experience constructing several successful housing projects in communities like Wilmer across greater Minnesota. A PDF of the developer's PowerPoint resume has been provided in your packet. The developer is proposing to build a 57-unit apartment complex with an estimated total investment of $10 million to help defray these costs associated with the mitigating of the environmental issues that the former dry cleaning business may have left, site clearance and preparation. The developer will be requesting TIF assistance in the future consistent with the Renaissance Zone incentive program. On April 21st, 2021, the Wilmer Planning Commission recommended approving the sale of the city property to the developer. This will be the first private project of its size and cost in downtown Wilmer in many decades. If this proposed Renaissance Zone project did not involve a combination of city-owned land and privately-owned land, staff could have waited a bit longer and presented a more full project design at a later date to the planning commission and to this body. But the developer must, must know they have the city-owned property before paying for the private property. Signed purchase agreements between the developer and owners of the neighboring private properties highlights the need to expedite approvals. The developer has also hired an architect and made progress developing their proposal, further indication of their commitment to Wilmer. A site plan and rendering of the proposed building exterior are also included in your packet. As a Renaissance Zone incentive to the proposed development, which will currently is estimated to have 5% affordable per the Renaissance Zone requirements, and will be 95% market rate, and the 5% is an 80% area median income, so it's actually quite high. It's not a real low AMI. The following four city-owned parcels comprising the entire west half of Block 25 are proposed to be sold at $1 each to increase workforce housing for the local industry in the downtown area, support the downtown economy also, provide construction jobs, and to return marginally-used property to a significantly higher and better use. The total tax assessed value of the Renaissance Zone land incentive to the developer is estimated to be $91,700. The city-owned site has previously generated a little interest from private developers, while it has remained vacant, relatively underutilized and tax-exempt for the past 39 years since 1982. After the $10 million investment and the expiration of any TIF, the developed block may generate an estimated $50,000 in annual tax revenue, which would pay Wilmer taxpayers back for the Renaissance Zone land incentive in just 24 months. So in closing, the private and public land sales are contingent on one another and are time-sensitive. The project is contingent on acquiring both halves of Block 25, so they need to know that the city-owned land is secured before paying for the privately-owned land. The developer is spending significant, significant time and funds performing its due diligence and project design with an architect. The developer has a 60-day time window, which I think is almost half gone, if I'm correct, Ted, to move forward with the private land purchase, and the developer intends to invest a large sum of $10 million into the block, which will infuse a great deal of improvement and infuse a number of residents in the downtown area that will patronize the stores and shops in that area. And with that, I would like to introduce Aaron Bachman with a few words.
Aaron, before you start, this is a public hearing, and the public that's out at home or wherever on their phones, they need to call 320-335-7135 if you have any questions or concerns. That number again is 320-335-7135. So we'll continue with the public hearing. Aaron?
So can you distribute this around to the council members? Mayor Protem, members of the city council, Aaron Backman, executive director of the EDC. I'm going to focus some of my initial comments on the need for housing in Candy Ojai County and in Wilmer in particular. I've distributed portions of the most recent monthly report from the West Central Association of Realtors, the April Report. Looks at new listings, closed sales, median sale price, homes for sale, and month's supply. If you look at that front page, we are at historic lows, generation low in terms of We are at 1.7 months as a region. Last year was 3.9 months as a region. That's pretty low. Now let's look, turn to the second page. This breaks it down by 18 different communities in the region, and some of the neighboring ones, New London, for example, last year was at 4.8 months, and a five months is a healthy number for cities in terms of having inventory on hand. This, currently, it's at .9. That's pretty low. Spicer was at 9.9 last year and is now 1.9 months available. Wilmer was at 2.4 months and currently are at 1.9. That's a challenge. 17 out of the 18 communities saw a drop in home availability. And that's, that's something that is impacting our employers and employees. The housing study in 2015 pointed to a need for different types of housing for the city of Wilmer, single-family homes, multifamily, senior housing, and so forth. Why, why should cities be involved with housing? If the city is seeing inventory of homes for sale under six months, under two months right now, we have a housing problem, and we need to be involved. And that takes partnerships, means working with developers to try to address the issue. The developer, as was mentioned by Dave, is on a 60-day time period to move forward with the private land purchases. Timing is of the essence. The developer is spending funds, doing his due diligence. They need to know, do we support the transaction? Developer's planning a $10 million investment in this community in downtown Wilmer, and delays, of course, add to costs. Developer is intending to start construction this year. That's good. I think that if we have an opportunity, we certainly should seriously look at this. I've been impressed with the developer. Every time we've asked them for information, they have provided it to us. So that's, that bodes well for the development. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Is there any audience members that would like to speak? Come on to the podium, state your name and your address, please.
Hello, my name's Stefan Deleski, and I live in downtown Wilmer, about two blocks west of where this is proposed to be. I have about 40 years of experience of living on top of Highway 12 and across from the railroad. They've covered a lot of it. They're 57 units, four-story apartment complex, $10 million. We haven't seen anything like that in downtown in a long time. QuickTrip built a $6 million gas station there last year, and that gas station, the taxes haven't really shown up on anything, but they also built the one on the, on the east side that has a market value of about $1.4 million. It contributes $48,520 in taxes. The one on South First Street has a market value of about $2.1 million, that contributes $69,000, $254 in taxes too. Living on Highway 12 is going to have issues. If they're talking about high-end rental, how are they going to get people to rent those apartments for $700 to $1,000 a month, living on Highway 12, across from the railroad, that builds trains 24/7, horns honking? We don't have quiet zones in the city of Wilmer anymore, or we never have. Sirens coming from the hospital, the fire department, and law enforcement that use Second Street to access East to West Highway 12. And how much parking is going to be provided? If that's 57 units, assuming each person has a car, that's 57 parking spots. We have 48 down there, and they said that there's 60% vacancy down there. From 10 to 2, well, 10 to 2 is probably when all the people that utilize that at night that live downtown are gone working somewhere. So there's some numbers there. Come and count the cars in my parking lot and maybe the one behind Bethel, you know, places where it's actually used a lot more. You'll be taking away that parking, but where are those 19 people going to park and/or the guests that come to that parking complex or that housing complex? You know, gifting them two lots at $91,000, that's probably insignificant in the grand scheme of things, but years ago, we looked at the east side of Wilmer from East Litchfield to where the old Domino's was. There's 17 pieces of property in there that contribute $11,853 in taxes with a market value last year of $846,000. We looked at putting high-density housing over there, which would really clean it up. They were majestic old houses that looked beautiful, but they no longer look beautiful. There's cars parked all over the place. You know, we have, it sounds like other apartments going up, the ones on Northwest 30th Street, they haven't been published yet as far as their taxes, so I don't know what the contribution is. New housing on Seventh and Gordon is going up. The 15th Street flats valued at $4.3 million, they're contributing $46,000 a year, and that Highway 71 Suite Living, they're contributing about $26,800 for a market value of 1.6. So what's really going to happen? You know, that lot is bare, and there's parking there, and people have complained downtown for 50 years that there's not enough parking, and I hear it too. They, they want to park right in front of our places. They don't want to walk 75 feet or 200 feet. A block is 300 feet. So I guess that's some of that. I appreciate you guys take a harder look at what the ramifications for everybody else is versus just what we get to do with tax increment financing and help. You know, if they got that kind of money to throw away, there's a lot of other things downtown that have been before you. Compromised sewers, I know there's other things on Fourth Street and other places that have issues, but we're not fixing those. We're, we're adding new stuff that, that could, could be good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Randy?
I'm Randy Zarnitsky. I live at 314 Fifth Street Southwest, downtown Wilmer. Mayor Protem, council members, generally, Steph and I are on the same side of issues, but we come from a little bit different standpoint, I would say, and I do admit we have a bias because we're one of the property owners that are involved in the project. One thing that I would like to bring to the attention or at least say again is that the planning department worked with all of the input provided by the housing needs and the need for development in downtown, and the Renaissance program was generated with that in mind to bring more development downtown and also to bring housing to the whole Wilmer area. So to back away from this particular project because it interferes with the city-owned property... property, there aren't a whole lot of other city-owned properties in downtown Wilmer that could be used for the Renaissance program. So being that this particular parking lot has been chosen is probably one of the best options. And yes, having been in downtown for the last 16 years or so and been a business owner myself, I would have to say that examining parking in downtown is still an important issue. But at this point, to throw in that greater parking discussion into the public hearing at hand and making a decision, I think are two different things. So that being said, I'm in support of it. I also would like to say that the Renaissance program is helping us as developers improve properties that are nearby. Jason Butler and myself, if anyone's seen the Huerta Building downtown, a little bit to the east, that we're in the process of giving that a significant facial upgrade. And we're working with the Planning Department in order to use the funds to make that happen. So I would say two things. One, I would love to see everyone support this project. And number two, that we do continue to examine parking options in the downtown area.
Thank you, Randy. Mr. Bachman?
Mayor Protam, council members. In terms of parking, the central business has 2,611 parking spaces. 80% of those are off-street, and 20% are on-street. In a typical workday, about 1,400 cars are parked downtown, where 54% of the spaces are utilized. That means that about 1,200 spaces are open on a typical workday pre-pandemic. That's the first point I wanted to make. The number of spaces affected by this development is less than 3% of the total number of parking spaces. As was pointed out by Dr. Amstead, typically, there are 18, 19 vehicles on this lot. I think there are spaces downtown. And I would also say that the developer is actually exceeding what is required. He's looking at 75 spaces parking onsite. He has enclosed parking, which is a benefit for the tenants, as well as the, the open lot as well. I think he has done a thoughtful job in terms of the plan itself, and he does want to handle the area appropriately, I feel. Housing has always been downtown, but the majority of the housing that we see downtown is dated. It has more efficiencies. And what we're trying to do is get some updated housing that young professionals can use, that may want to have walkability, whether they're working at one of the attorney's offices, or CPA firms, or the hospital, which is our second-largest employer. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience want to speak? Mr. Hillenbrand or Cody, is there anyone online that has called in?
Mr. Mayor Protam, at this time, we have no calls from the public.
All right, thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the table here. What would the council like to do? Mayor Protam?
Mr. Plowman?
May I ask a question of Mr. Bachman, if possible?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protam. Thank you, Aaron, again, for your presentation, for the information. It's always very thorough. Appreciate that. As far as what we're trying to do tonight, because we're, just to, to be clear, we are not discussing any subsidies, we're not discussing financing, anything like that. We're talking about a land transaction. Are there any teeth or ramifications, should we proceed with the land transaction? But then down the road, when the discussion comes up, talking financials and talking the actual project itself, are there any ramifications to the land transaction itself? How, how would that go? If, for example, the project fell apart, again, I'm not hypothesizing that is going to go any particular direction, just asking the question, if it were to not happen, what then would become of the land transaction?
Certainly, it's contingent upon the other properties being acquired as well. This is a very experienced developer. They've done 38 projects, housing projects around the state, and the, all but six of those have been in greater Minnesota. So they have a long track record. You know, Ted can certainly respond to that, but they have a long track, track record of meeting their goals and getting projects done on time.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I'm not sure who can answer this question, but I understand that it seems to be a dry cleaning, some of this area. Has there been core samples by the PCA, and has that bait been taken in consideration?
Mayor Protam, council member. As I understand it, I've not seen written documentation as to whether there was soil borings, but certainly, the TIF, I think, would be justified in terms of any potential environmental cleanup. There was removal of the dry cleaning business, but they would want to do some additional testing.
Any other questions? Now, this is just for the sale of the land. They need this before they can proceed with the private sale. If that doesn't follow through, this is null and void. So they got to have this one first.
I'll make a motion that we approve the sale of the city lot.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second for the sale, to adopt the land purchase by resolution. Further questions? Clerk Thompson, roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Abstain.
I'm sorry, abstain. Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays, one abstain.
That passes. Congratulations. Get to work, you guys, get that building built.
Thank you very much.
We have a second motion?
Okay.
To adopt the resolution approving the purchase agreement, so that authorizing the mayor and administrator execute the purchase agreement on behalf of the city.
By summary. A condensed one, then, right?
Actually, it's, it's to authorize the mayor and administrator to execute the purchase agreement on behalf of the city.
Okay.
City attorney's got something.
Time out, okay.
Mayor Protam, members of the council. So there's actually three actions on this item. The first, I think you have voted on, which is to approve the ordinance authorizing the land sale. The second would be to consider a resolution or a motion to publish the ordinance by summary. And then third would be a separate motion to pass a resolution approving the purchase agreement that is in your packet.
Okay. I cheat-cheat and say that, so.
I'll make a motion to publish in summary. Second.
Second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson? Oops, sorry. I keep missing her on that. Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Now we need a motion to approve the sale of the purchase agreement, or sign a purchase agreement.
Sign the purchase agreement? So.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Further questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
And Nelson abstains, so seven ayes, zero nays, one abstain.
All right, that's approved. Thank you again. Good luck. All right, next item, consideration of federal grant for Wilmer Airport. Execution of Federal Airport Expense Reimbursement Agreement. Mr. Running, how are you, sir?
I am well, Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the council. Thank you for a few minutes of time here. As you followed a lot of the legislation at the federal level, we had another act passed in 2021 that created the CRRAA, $2 billion, B billion with a B, for airports. 1.75 billion of that is allocated to large, primary passenger service and cargo airports. So the majority of it went to the big airports. But as they trickled through the allocation process, the city of Wilmer is eligible for $23,000 in a federal grant. This money would be primarily used for operations, janitorial things, potentially equipment, say, cleaning equipment type of stuff, in order to help prevent the spread of bacteria or, or COVID-19 specifically in this case. So we're looking for a resolution approving that grant. This, this process, if you remember from some of the other ones we've gone through, the state of Minnesota is the, the caveat or the caretaker of this money for us. So the federal government deposits it to the state, and we get it from the state. They don't take any cut of it, but we, we have to show our expenses, show legitimate use of the money, and then we're reimbursed for those expenses. So with that, I would stand for any questions.
Any questions from the council?
Third motion to adopt a resolution approving the municipal airport, receive the CRRAA grant, and authorize the mayor and administrator to execute the Federal Airport Expense Reimbursement Agreement on behalf of the city.
Second. We've got a motion and a second. Further questions? You shouldn't have any problem getting invoices for this.
I, I think we'll be all right. Because of the way that we have the operations agreement with the city and things, we have documented hours, and we've got some extra documented hours for additional cleaning and things like that, it shouldn't be a problem.
All right. All right, roll call. Clerk Thompson?
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, and I would just say happy sootin' am I.
Yeah.
All right. Consideration of bids and award of contract for Robins Island Project, Phase 2.
Mayor Protam, members of the council, tonight we're going to talk about Robins Island, Invest in Wilmer Project, Phase Number 2. The motion will be to recommend the City Council of Wilmer to adopt a resolution awarding touristic construction, the contract for the Invest in Wilmer Project, Phase 2, for the amount of $1,67,455 for the shelter and light improvements. Part of Phase 2 of the Invest in Wilmer projects for Robins Island was the shelters and the alternates of having some lights, some streetlights, and some bullards around the path. And lucky for us, the bids came in, into budget, and we're looking at trying to get these accomplished yet this summer. Bolton and Mink, Jared Vogi here, who has been working with us, so we want to thank him and the subcommittee for their work on this project. If we look at the budget part of it, you'll be able to see that the base project came in just under $1 million. And then we'll be able to have the lights as the alternates, and we're able to fund those with projects that we have budgeted. And then we also have a city contingency of 15%, which is a little bit more than what we typically have. We just want to make sure that we have enough money, just in case that there's some soil corrections and everything like that out there. You'll see that open shelter, Number 2, they have a, we have a budget price in there. That one's going to be actually bought through our, say, cooperative purchasing power, instead of it being constructed by sick build, basically. It's going to have the copper roof or the top, the pillars, and then we're going to have some decorative, decorative rock around there. Then we have also the engineering, the testing, and the administrative work, and Public Works is going to help out with doing the tree restoration. So when you look at the Phase 2 budget, and then the Phase 1, we come in with remaining funds of about $67,000 with our contingencies left. So it has been a really good project to get going. We'll update with the street project that's out there now. It's starting to get paved, so hopefully we get good weather that they'll be able to finish up this Thursday, so we can take down some of the signs. So I do have Jared here from Bolton and Mink, if you have any questions about the project. But that's our recommendation, that's how the motion go forward.
Any questions from the council? Audrey?
It, it looks great. I had a hard time reading the spreadsheet that was on the back when you referred to the alternates. So there's some alternates we're not doing, is that correct?
Nope, we'll be able to do all the alternates.
You can do all of them, okay.
Yep. So the streetlights and the bullards, that would be going around the, the path.
Okay. And the roofing materials and the other is all included, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to award, to adopt a resolution awarding to wisha construction the contract for Invest in Wilmer, Robins Island Project, Phase 2, for the amount of $1,67,455 for the shelter and lighting improvements.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the bid to wisha. Further questions? Will this be done by Rockin' Robins? Maybe?
No, he said, he said no!
We'll be optimistic that we get, let's get the road and the grass growing first.
All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmas?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Recreation Fields, next.
Yes. Another Invest in Wilmer project. We have Marcus Construction here, who's our construction manager at risk. Their team is here, too, so thank you for showing up and all your help that you've done through this project. We have the co-chairs, Tony Amen and John Coldwell here as well, to help support this project. There's actually going to be two motions to this project. Okay, sometimes it gets a little tongue-tied here, okay? So the motion is to adopt a resolution awarding the contract to the contractors and material suppliers recommended by Marcus Construction, the construction manager, for each bid package, and authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to sign on the behalf of the city of Wilmer all contract award letter and letters assigning the right to enter such contracts to the construction manager.
Okay.
The second motion will be to adopt a resolution accepting the attached guaranteed maximum price proposal in the amount of $4,418,958 for the base bid, plus the amount of all the alternates awarded as shown below, and authorizing the city administrator and the mayor to sign on behalf of, behalf of the city of Wilmer. Now, the Recreation Fields is going to consist of two turf fields north of the Civic Center, and then the baseball softball complex on the south side. That will have the pinwheel concept in there with the concession stand, restroom, and storage in that facility. And then we'll have the turf fields, and you'll see down on the bottom, some of the alternates that we had were to have lights on to the turf field. So there go be shared poles in the middle, and then the outside lights will be, is there as well. So we'll have an east and a west set of fields. So those are alternate one, and alternate number two. Alternate number three will be the batting cages, that will be at the baseball softball complex, and the alternate of upgrading the dugouts, Field Number 2. So the dugouts will be cinder block and, and a roof and everything on top of that. So want to make sure that we understand what the guaranteed maximum price is for Marcus is basically that Marcus is going to provide the city with a guaranteed maximum price on all the base bids. The GMP is the amount that the contract sum shall not exceed for the project. The GMP includes the construction manager fees, contingency, and the cost of the work. The GMP for the recreational project base bid is $4,418,958. And so when we look at the budget on the backside of the, on the car report, and we look at the base project, and then we look at the alternates, what the budget amounts in there are, with the city contingencies, and the testing, the architectural fees, and other engineering fees, and site surveys, and utility costs, we come real close to the $6 million, but we are under it. So we are under budget for this project. I'd like to get moving on it.
Let's get moving with a motion to adopt a resolution awarding the contracts to the contractors and material suppliers. awarding the contracts to the contractors and material suppliers recommended by Marcus Construction for each bid package and on behalf of the city of Wilmer, blah, whatever. You got it. You want me to reread it?
Sure.
Okay. Recommended by Marcus Construction, who is the construction manager, for each bid package and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to sign on behalf of the city of Wilmer all contract award letters and letters assigning the right to enter such contracts to the construction manager.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. And this total is the $7 million?
Six.
Six.
Six? Okay.
This is under six.
Okay.
Under six. All right. Further questions?
Question?
Audrey?
So, this is our first motion with the true using a construction manager, right?
Correct.
I think you kind of walked through that. Basically, they're assuming the responsibility for the different parts of the bid and that the work will get done and all of that. Is there anything else from a legal standpoint we should know about this contract being different than when we do bids ourselves? I'm just curious.
Which one from Marcus would like to answer that one? So, I'll have Jim come and answer.
Welcome, Jim.
Jim Bach, Marcus Construction. Audrey, I'm going to have to have you repeat that question for my place.
I can do this too. This is the first contract that we've done with a construction manager. And so, I'm just, and I remember when we started the process, we had a lesson on what a construction manager was. And so, I just want to make sure that we've reviewed the different, how it will work differently than when we, than Robins Island or something else like that.
Sure.
With that. So, I just, if you would be willing to do that. If there's anything else we need to know or be aware of.
Your construction manager is your representative for the city of Wilmer. We are here to take care of you. We are also here to make sure that the dollars that are being spent on this project are managed throughout each phase of the construction. So, and that comes down to estimating it, putting it out for bids, making sure that there's a competitive market for the bids. In this particular case, and then, of course, scheduling and managing, you know, throughout the course of the project. So, that's what, that's what your construction manager is and that's what that basically means in this contract. That's what you're doing.
I think one of the things that was an advantage is that we would have to have less staff, our, less city staff be involved.
Yes.
It feels like that's a positive for us right now too with transitions that we have. So, any other words of wisdom? Otherwise, I'm good.
Yeah. I mean, and so far, I think Rob would agree. You know, we've worked hand in hand with the committees. We've been part of those meetings and also working with Rob to just put the packages together so that, you know, he has what he needs for you. So.
Or Julie?
Okay. And this isn't probably specifically just for this one, this project, but I was looking at the fiscal breakdown and I didn't see anything in there on attorney's fees that we have spent. Basically, my understanding is the city has absorbed them at this point. And then I know we had some discussion that when this is all done, that we had it on record that the city, if there was money left over, extra money from all the projects, that the city would then get reimbursed for the attorney's fees. Is that correct?
Mayor Pro Tem, Fagerly and city council members, that is correct. That is what the discussion was. So, on the books, we are running all of the attorney costs through the city attorney line item in our standard annual budget. And we'll, we identify what those costs are. We have them broke, we can break them out. And that when all the projects are all debt-free, if there's typically, at the end, there's always a residual amount of funds, whether it be three months or four months at the end. When it all settles out, if there's enough money, we would pay ourselves back what we've been holding all this time, you know, whether it's 12 years or whatever it is. That was the plan. And as you know, any council that comes after you can change that plan as they see fit. But that's the direction that staff was going. Okay. Further questions? Mr. Butterfield?
I thought we put all these out for bids just to get numbers, not to be awarding projects at this time.
Mayor Pro Tem, member of the council, once we got the bids back in and then we have a certain amount of days to get to award the bids. And so, this is just part of the process of going through to awarding the contracts and getting the projects done.
So, we did put out bids or get bids?
Yep. Yep. Marcus Construction did that for us.
But there's also concerns with the loss, you know, program off of this. And that's why we were only going to get hard numbers before we voted to move this. This is what Audrey brought up, council member Nelson brought up, to move this forward. And now, we're by-stepping that.
Well, they're hard numbers now. Mr. Mayor, you want to speak?
That's what it is.
Mayor Pro Tem, Fagerly and councilmember Butterfield, the direction that staff was given was to bring the numbers back to the council and at that time, the council would have the ability to decide whether to go ahead with the projects or not. We currently have a motion on the table saying they want to approve those. So, that is the process that is being followed. You have received the bids, you have looked at the bids, you've evaluated the bids. Now, you're at the point where you're going to accept the bids and there's a motion to do so along with a second.
Thank you. Audrey?
I'm not sure if I completely heard what you said. I had expressed a concern about a conversation that took place a couple of meetings ago because we had made a commitment to put them out for bids, that we weren't just, we weren't just doing it to see what they were with that. So, you know, we've walked this far, we set priorities, we worked through designs, we looked at the budgets and with all of that, and we put it out for bids. So, I'm not sure if what you were stating, I was expressing a concern that we wouldn't, that we were just going through the process here and not being serious about putting it out for bids. And I think when we had the conversation about some of the other projects, we were concerned about whether they were going to come in under bid, which they have. And the due diligence and the things that have been done, to me, would say, we authorized this project to have the architects and the construction managers work on this for, I would defer to Mr. Grammets how long ago we did that and the priorities from the council were set. The question about what else we can do, I think, when we're done. But to me, we've committed this far, the bids came under, and I defer to Mr. Grammets for any other comments with that.
Mayor Pro Tem and city council members, yeah, this is the point where we say, accept the bids, it's under budget and move forward. Just as a reminder, the contingency is included in that amount. And so, having that buffer of the contingency also helps. And if you don't spend that money, that money can be utilized either on this project for other things or it, as you remembered, 10% of this budget could be transferred to another project. So, that decision is still left up to the city council. But what's before you tonight in the first motion is we've gone out for bid on those sections that the construction manager said we should go out for. And there are some sections that we may have gone to the state contract for, where we can just go to that provider and say, we're going to buy that from you. And then you put all the pieces together. The construction manager totaled all the numbers up and what you have in that budgetary fiscal issues recap, it all comes under budget, including, you know, any of the alternates that they had hoped to construct. The one thing that is missing, I think everybody remembers that we talked about having a dome over one of the turf fields, but it would cost more than the $6 million allocated in the state legislation. And so, we got to stop short of that. But whether we add that in the future sometime, that's a decision for, again, future councils. And I guess I would say we've got enough contingency in there to moderate anything we didn't anticipate. And the construction manager is confident by giving, actually, the second motion that she'll be doing tonight, saying, here is my price, that guaranteed maximum price for the council. So, I think everything has fallen into line and if you want to, you can proceed.
I think, just so that everybody's clear, my understanding, tonight's, when we're making the big decisions. So, with this motion, we're saying, and the second motion, that the recreational fields coming in at $6 million is the next project that's going to go. After this, we're then going to look at the event center for $10 million and we'll make the decision of whether or not, that came in at 9.5, but we'll be making the decision of whether that's going to move forward. And then it's the $2 million for the community center. And there wasn't exactly a motion in there then for water mitigation, but that there, we're set with $7 million, that should be going towards water mitigation. So, right now, we are addressing the $6 million rec fields.
Mr. Butterfield?
My understanding, the bill has that we're building it with a dome. That's my concern. State comes back and says, no dome, you guys have paper to put it up.
Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. And this is true for each of the local option sales tax projects. They were broadly identified, both in the referendum that was conducted locally and in the special legislation. The special legislation operates as an authorization for the city council to impose the tax, to collect the tax and then to spend the proceeds of the tax on specific projects. It doesn't get into the details of the specific components. So, as long as you have a project consistent with the label and the legislation that you're constructing recreation fields, you are authorized by that legislation to spend the money you've collected in the tax for that project. And this certainly qualifies and satisfies these requirements of the state legislation.
Councilmember Plomon?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I have a couple of statements to make. The first one, I was involved with the athletic field subcommittee. I think they did an excellent job from the very beginning, meetings, planning this out, doing the best job they could in terms of identifying the need and differentiating the needs from the wants and trying to be efficient and effective in their work. They were diligent in the work that they did and they were forced with some, they were tasked with the task of choosing from different items, you know, that they really wanted for the community, but that just weren't going to be able to happen. I think the resulting project that came back was a good one. I was beyond pleased and actually somewhat surprised. I work in this industry and I was quite surprised that the bid came back under budget. These bids right now in the upper Midwest are going 15% to 20% higher than this for similar projects, like very similar projects. So, I was quite surprised, I was quite pleased. I would like to see this project move forward. However, I mentioned that I work in this industry, so that's a segue to my second statement. I will be abstaining from these votes and I don't have to say this, but I will. I had counseled with our legal counsel some years back. The company that I work for makes products for use on and underneath athletic fields and we are one of, just a few of those products in the country. So, there is the possibility that our products may be used. I've gone through investigating the legal statutes and whatnot and as long as the, anything that takes place is done through national distribution chains and that our company has no direct affiliation with the project, that satisfies the legal agreement and requirement. But some have brought the question to me locally and so I thought, as opposed to just saying nothing and abstaining from it and leaving people wondering why, I just wanted to address that publicly. That's the reason that I'll be abstaining from the vote. Again, I support the project. I'm pleasantly surprised and happy that it came back where it did, but I will be abstaining from the vote. So, thank you.
Appreciate that statement. Further questions? Let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield?
Nay.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plomon abstains. Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Six, excuse me, seven, or six ayes, one nay and one abstain.
All right. Thank you. The next one that we need to do, resolution for this project.
Yes. This will be for the Recreation and Event Center.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution accepting the attached guaranteed maximum price proposal in the amount of $4,418,958 for the base bid plus the amounts for all alternates awarded as shown below and authorizing the city administrator and the mayor to sign the name on behalf of the city of Wilmer.
Second?
We got a motion and a second. Further questions? Roll call?
Councilmember O'Brien?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plomon abstain. Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Nay.
Six ayes, one nay, one abstain.
All right. Thank you. Next one, Event and Recreation Center.
Yes. So, same type of format. We're going to have two motions on this one. The first one, we need to adopt a resolution awarding the contracts to the contractors and suppliers recommended by Marcus Construction, the construction manager, for each bid package and authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to sign on the behalf of the city of Wilmer all contract award letters and letters assigning the right to each such contracts to the construction manager. The second motion will be to adopt a resolution accepting the attached guaranteed maximum price proposal in the amount of $7,691,672 for the base plus the amount of all the alternates awarded as shown below and authorizing the city administrator and the mayor to sign the same on behalf of the city of Wilmer. Again, this is the project that we've been working on for quite some time out at the civic center. It's going to be a 25,000 square feet building with eight pickleball courts, two tennis courts, two basketball, two volleyball courts. Just so we can put in retrospect about what 25,000 square feet is. If the Blue Line Arena is in play, if that's inside the rink, that's 17,000 square feet. So, we're getting more space than what is inside of a hockey facility. This also includes a kitchen area, an indoor playground, meeting rooms, dressing rooms, updated and expanded lobby with pre-function hallway space for events. And again, with the construction manager, GMP, with Marcus Construction, they're not going to overexceed this project. The base bid is at $7,691,672. And the alternates are listed below between the community room, the wall partition in the meeting room, the wall partition in the dry floor area, additional basketball hoops, the bleachers. Alternate six will be paving and seven will be the landscaping around the facility. And then when you get into the city costs, we're over, just over $1 million for that. So, we're happy to say that this project came in under budget And if you just look at the budgetary stuff, we are just really excited that this came in under budget, knowing what the steel prices were, concrete, masonry. I think the subcommittee did a very good job on making sure that they included as much- I think the subcommittee did a very good job on making sure that they included as much as they possibly could with the project. And then with the help of Marcus Construction, it was a good project to be completed.
The council like to do.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution awarding the contracts to the contractors and suppliers recommended by Marcus Construction for each bid package, and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to sign on behalf of the City of Wilmer all contract award letters and letters assigning the right to enter such contracts to the construction manager.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Further questions? So the paving on this one, is that overlay or is that a new?
It's because it cuts into the parking lot a little bit, there's going to be some paving that's going to have to be redone.
Okay.
And just probably notice, I probably should have said it at the beginning, this does have a contingency of half a million dollars.
I just want to say that I was the council liaison for this group, and I was very proud of everyone on that committee. They worked really hard, and it was hard to get everything that we needed in that price range. And so unlike Andrew, I don't sell anything pertaining to this, so I will be voting. And thank you, Rob, because I know you worked really hard on it, too.
Thank you.
On all the projects.
Counselor member Ask.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I think the voters have asked for this, they've provided funds for this, we've all paid higher taxes for this. As Councilwoman Davis said, we have dedicated members of our community who have worked really hard to serve all of us, the creation of these plans, and some wonderful staff as well. I know that there's some in the community who will be disappointed that we couldn't do more, but we simply, I don't think, have the dollars to do so at this time. And I think that's really important because I'm hoping that at a later date, more can be added to that property. But I do want to trust the process. I want to trust the people in this room that have worked really hard to bring us to this point. I want to trust the Invest in Wilmer Board and the Park and Rec Board, and the subcommittees that have brought us the plans that are before us tonight. It's not been an easy task for them, I know that, but I think they've done great work. They've made tough decisions, they've served Wilmer well. And I think this is just an exciting time for the community, and I look forward to seeing these plans become a reality.
Thank you for those remarks. Mr. Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to say? You're okay. Julie?
I love these projects. I love all the work that everybody has put into them, the dedication of the volunteers in the community are unbelievable. But as we've talked about before, we're not getting the revenue that we need to do all of the projects. And we're going to be seven to eight million short. My feeling is, for right now, the Event Center is the project that has to get put on hold for a little while, and see what happens in the next, whether it's three years or five years, but to see if that revenue can ever be made up, because we've already lost two years. Just to play it out, we thought we would get $250,000 a month. And right now, we're averaging about 180. So for the 16 months that we have collected the local option sales tax revenue, we are short almost 2 million. So from this point forward, it's 1.8 million that we're short so far on our projections of where we would be with the 30 million. So besides having to make up that 200 million, we also, or 2 million, we also need to get more. And we could very possibly start to get more revenue and get up to that 250,000 a month. Right now, we're at 180,000. And that was taking into account pre-pandemic, because we had, what, October, November, December? Or we had December, what really came in was December, January, and February, pre-pandemic, and now since. And we just aren't hitting that mark. So we have to gain a whole lot more to even get to our 250,000, and then some, to make up for what we've already lost. And I just don't see us being able to do that. And as much as it breaks my heart, and as much as I would love for this community to have every one of these projects, I look at it as, okay, just like with everybody, every one of these projects, everybody had to cut to get down under budget and to say, okay, what can we do within what we have? And so if we're not going to have the seven or eight million, and I feel very strongly it's not going to come from water mitigation, that is something that is going to, that is going to affect everybody in this community. It isn't just hockey players, it isn't just pickleball players, it isn't just anybody else who's got baseball players or softball players, that's everybody. So I feel very strongly that that has to stay. The community center is another thing that serves more population as the community. But right now, I just feel like the Event Center has to get put on hold a little bit. And if we're not going to spend the money on that, I would like to see us build the third sheet of ice and possibly look at the locker rooms at the Civic Center, which will be another part of just enhancing the Civic Center facility that we have. So I, at this point, cannot vote in favor of going ahead with the Event Center.
Thank you for those remarks. Audrey?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I am supportive of moving forward with the Event Center. We did our due diligence, it's no different than the fields. We prioritized, we figured out how we could bond for these two projects. I do believe this is the right time to move forward with that. I think Mr. Grammets has done a good job showing us the possibilities to be able to move forward when, with the city hall and the $2 million, that that could be available in a reasonable period of time. And he may, if I may ask him to share what he shared with us, I think that's important. I don't think we should, we made a commitment to do this, and I think this is the right time. I don't think prices are going to go down. I think no different, Marcus Construction and the staff put together a great package and a bid, it's under budget. I think this is the time to move forward with it. Am I hopeful that we will have an outdoor sheet of ice and some other things? Yes. But for right now, I think this is the right thing to do, and it will serve our community well. And we will then look to see what else we can do. And so as difficult as it is to look at our local option sales tax dollars, I do think that we will see increases, I do think that we will be able to afford some of the other projects. I don't support asking for an extension at this time. I think we have possibilities. This is only the second year, and I think this community has faith in itself and the projects that we're talking about going on and industry. I do think we will see increases in our local option sales tax, and I think we have to take the positive approach, that this is something that's important for our community right now, and it's come together for us to be able to do that. And so I will be voting in favor of it. I think it's the right thing to do with the structure that was put in place and the priorities, the bonding and the bids, it's the right thing to do.
Thank you for those remarks. Further questions? Let's have a roll call.
Counselor member Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plauman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
No.
Butterfield.
Nay.
O'Brien.
Aye.
That carries.
Six ayes, two nays.
We'll have another resolution.
Oh, okay. For that amount.
For the GMP.
Oh.
Let me repeat it.
Yep.
To adopt a resolution accepting the attached guaranteed maximum price proposal in the amount of $7,691,672 for the base bid, plus the amount of all the alternates awarded as shown below, and authorizing the city administrator and the mayor sign the same on behalf of the City of Wilmer.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Further questions? Roll call.
Counselor member Davis.
Aye.
Plauman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Nay, but it isn't because I don't want the project.
Butterfield.
Nay.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
City Hall and Community Center project. Mr. Grammets?
Mayor Protem, Fagerly, and city council members, one of the items on past city council meeting agendas was, how are we going to finance the city hall community center? And part of that discussion, I think, was, what did we have as reserves and assets? We had, I think, a finance special city council meeting joint, and we talked about these issues. So what did we have in reserves and assets? Assets would be land that we own, that we don't have any direct use for other than just renting it out. Reserves would be those accounts that were put up for emergencies, you know, things of that nature, reducing, you know, one fund and using those reserves towards the facility. There was talk about the balance being GO bonds, and obviously, the $2 million local option sales tax, which was allocated to the community center. And I think the concept, I guess, at this point in time is, if we do have a positive perspective on sales tax, it has been, you know, inching upwards in these last few months, and we hope that continues, that at some point in time, that after we sell the bonds for the 16 million in projects that we approved tonight, that there's actually extra capacity that we can sell a $2 million, a $2 million bond to go along with the city hall financing to create the project. And when I mean project, there was the original site that was identified by the city council, and then there was a proposal submitted back in, I think it was March, April, maybe even May of last year, where a local development group, the Wilmer Ten, proposed something at the mall site. Okay, so we have two project locations, but neither can go forward if you don't have the money to pay for it. And so what was talked about at the meetings in the past was, once we have an idea of what we're doing for the recreation fields and the rec and event center, then we'd have a better understanding of where we are sitting with the city hall community center funding. And so having addressed those two items tonight, I think the issue is, is what does the city council want to do next? I had sent out an email basically identifying all of the contingencies that we've had for our various projects, and that if nothing occurs that draws those contingencies down, you know, if in a perfect world, we don't have any issues or problems, we have those contingencies available to the city council to use for the community center or for stormwater mitigation, as Counselor Osmus had noted. And if you look at just the contingencies, we're right at like 1.2 million. Again, let's assume 200,000 gets used for things we find, so we have a million. And we currently have, you know, cash on hand in the sales tax fund, which we need to maintain a reserve amount, just in case sales tax dips, kind of a thing. You need to have some money to pay the principal and interest. And so anything left over beyond what is necessary to cover your principal and interest in a downturn would be available. And so if you've already got a million, you know, from the contingencies, and you have, you know, let's say a million available in your reserve account by the time we do this project, you would have the community center dollars absent any projects for stormwater mitigation. Okay, that's maxing us out. In past discussions with the mayor and finance director and city engineer, or public works director, we had talked about stormwater was going to be one of those, we may do a project this year and then not the next year. You know, in our five-year plan, we've got allocations put in to the plan for stormwater mitigation, but it was all dependent upon, did the city have any money in the account to do it? Because we weren't going to bond for the stormwater, we were just going to pay cash, pay-as-you-go sort of a thing. That's a decision, you know, for the city council to make at some point in the future, which projects they want to do and how much money do they have available to do that. But it makes no sense to have the Wilmer Ten hanging out there on this project, nor the architect and construction manager that we actually hired back in January or February for the city hall. I think, you know, if we're going to move forward, we could then get presentations by both of those entities of site, and then once you make your decision on site, then you plan for implementation. And that may not be for two years, you know, that's up to the council. But we have two sites out there now, and I think the council would be able to focus in on one of them as the preferred site. And then it's just a matter of getting through the projects that were approved tonight and seeing what's left over in order to move forward. Now, you may want to use it for stormwater, or you may want to use it for the community center. That's a decision that you can make. But in six months from now, we'll have, I think, a really good understanding of how much contingency money is sitting there unused, and how much is excess in our local option sales tax account. Once we get the 16 million in bonds sold for the two projects approved tonight, we'll have a really good handle, and that'll come later on midsummer. We'll have a really good handle on how much we need to keep in that sales tax account. So things are coming together, and I think between now and when you have to make a decision on to go or not go, and how much money you have, you could at least identify your preferred site if you wish to instruct staff to pursue that and bring that back to the city council. So that's a long explanation, probably for a very short question.
Comments on what Administrator Grammets said? Audrey?
I did reach out to Mr. Grammets late this afternoon because I was concerned that our car form looked like we had come to consensus and had, were making this a recommendation, and the last sentence reads, "The discussion of Option Two was tentatively determined to be the preferred alternative and suggested as follows." I went back to our city, first of all, I want to say, finance and the staff worked very hard to put together information for us to look at. We had a special meeting, we walked through the fund balances, we looked at different options, we looked at different ways of doing it, we spent time going through why those fund balances were there, what could be done to change that? Did we come up with, yes, we could maybe come up with some funds? Yes. Did we come to consensus? No. And I want to read this. This is what the minutes said. "After considerable discussion, it was the consensus of the committee to take this for information and wait until the pending bids are received for the local option sales tax projects before finalizing a decision." And I know we need to make a decision, but each item that's listed there requires that we make decisions on reserves and assets, looking at bonds, to be honest about how much taxes we will need to raise in the community to do the bonds. $2 million in local option sales tax revenue, it might be there maybe next year. Two million dollars in local option sales tax revenue, it might be there maybe next year, maybe it's there now. But as Mr. Grammatt just said, we'll have a better idea in six months. "Amend the fund balance policy." Each line that we take funds with has to be changed. We didn't make any of those decisions. "Prepare, plan for the sale of excess city property." That's great, but we didn't do it yet, we have only conceptualized it, and don't really, I don't have a clue what the possibilities might be for selling it. One place it listed, you know, information about the old community center, we haven't decided on a site yet. "Prepare a proposed national gas franchise fee ordinance." Councilmember Vagerly brought it up about the possibility of doing that. That takes a council decision, it takes an ability to put it in the budget. Maybe that's our next budget cycle, that we make those decisions. How do we do this right now? And then to request, you know, to get different proposals on this. And so I feel frustrated because I know we need to make a decision, but we spend a lot of time talking about stuff, but we, as a council, have not prioritized or made any decisions on the things that we talked about. And so, you know, do we need another meeting to walk through these again? I'm not sure what it is, but I don't think we're ready to make the decision that's put before us tonight.
Councilmember Osmus?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay, the meeting that we had, where we had to, our objective was to see if we could come up with 10 million dollars to be able to fund the City Hall and the community center, and that was our brainstorming session. And this is the list of all those things, as we went through each line item and came up with. So my feeling was, the purpose of that meeting was to go, is it even feasible to come up with 10 million? And we did, we came up with a way to say, okay, we can do this if we agree to all those items, but, and that was the part of the discussion, is that possible? And that was the time to discuss it. If we didn't think we couldn't take 1 million out of one of the two emergency funds, that was the time to discuss it, where we said, that's there, that's there, and we came up with the 4.5 million in some of those. Otherwise, we couldn't tell Tewisha to go ahead with some kind of decision on whether or not we were going to do the J.C. Penney's property. At some point, we're going to make a decision, and that's what I feel tonight was all about. So either we went ahead with the 10 million for the event center, or we didn't, and that freed up the 2 million and the 7 million for stormwater to go ahead with the rest of the projects. I guess, if, I'm not, I don't want to wait six months, I don't want to kick this down the road anymore. Let's make a decision if we're going to do it, and that's what the finance meeting was for, and if the first thing is to pick a site, then let's make a motion and pick a site, move forward.
Further questions? Audrey?
I agree, we have to make a decision. However, that night, we sat there, one person started tallying, take a million here, take a million here. We didn't vote on it, we didn't make a decision, we accepted it for information. And first of all, in my opinion, we have to decide, can this community afford a 10 million dollar project right now? Can we afford to raise taxes? If we decide that we can do that by coming together and making some decisions on that, then we need to decide where the location will be. Then we decide where the location will be. I, you know, we've had this project put before us, it might be the right place to be. But right now, I don't know whether we're ready to spend 10 million dollars and raise taxes 10%. That was, the estimate was there.
No, no.
Can I finish?
Yep.
That's what it was.
But you can't give false information, it's not 10%.
Can I finish?
Yep.
That was what Mr. Grammatt's put to us as one of the options, if we didn't come up with some of the other items. So we looked at those things, we spent a lot of time with them, and there were lots of questions that were still there, and we didn't make a decision, okay? So that's where I'm at. We need to make a decision, can we take 4 million from reserves? Are we willing to raise taxes 5%? Those are the things that, and if that's what we're trying to do here, then we just, we have to figure out, do we have local option sales tax money? Are we going to sell properties? Those types of things. We didn't do that at the finance meeting, we came up with ideas. And so for me, the first question is, can we afford, can this community afford to do it or not to do it? Because people want it done, I understand that. The question is how, and are they willing to pay the taxes to do it?
You want to rebuttal?
Rebuttal.
Boy.
This is fun. I, I just want to speak for the people who utilize the community center. And we just approved baseball fields, and we approved softball fields and turf fields and basketball courts. And the seniors that utilize the majority of the time at the community center are waiting to see what's going to happen with their facility, and they've been waiting years. And this was an opportunity to update that building, to do something for that population, and I'm just speaking in favor of them being able to have an updated community center.
Councilmember Butterfield?
I believe we just spent our reserves on the lost projects.
Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I am in favor of this project, I appreciate the time and the efforts that staff did in executing what we asked of them in terms of pulling the financial options together. I believe that was done, I believe this is a project that should happen. But one thing that I will say in comparing or contrasting to some of the projects that we already did approve, those projects, in fairness, were at a different stage. The stage they were at was ready, like go-ready, and I feel as though, although I wish that this project was at that stage right now, it's not. And therefore, I believe that we're still at a higher altitude, and we got to continue to zoom down in on the project. And I, just to be frank, we've had some heavy agenda items tonight, and we still have some. And I don't think that we, I don't think it's possible with the information that we have and where we're at currently, I don't think coming to consensus on this item tonight is a feasible task. I think this is a larger item in and of itself, with that, I would motion to table it.
Second.
We got a motion to table and a second. It's tabled. All right. Curling facility refrigeration design contract.
Mayor Protem, we have to make a roll, you have to do a roll call for that motion to table.
Is that true? Okay, sorry. Roll call to table.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Vagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. Rob?
Mayor Protem, members of the council tonight, we're going to talk about the Glacial Ridge Curling Facility with the refrigeration design with B-32. The motion tonight will be to recommend to the city council of Wilmer to approve an agreement with B-32 Engineering for Refrigeration Design for the amount of 19,800 for the Glacial Ridge Curling Center project. Basically, a broad view of this, we've already hired the architect for the project, they're in schematic designs. The architect needs to have the refrigeration design part of it. The curlers have donated the dollars to it, plus the 5% that they have needed for the contract-wise, to get the project to keep moving forward, we need the agreement with B-32. B-32 is the same refrigeration company that designed the new system that we have at the Civic Center. Everyone is happy with this, and we would like to move this agreement forward so we can keep making this progress in the facility.
I'll make a motion to recommend to the city council of Wilmer to approve the agreement with B-32 Engineering for Refrigeration Design for the amount of 19,800 for the Glacial Ridge Curling Center project.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve this for engineering. You see, Mr. Amberg is out there, he's a curler. You want to update us on what's happening? Well, with your building, how's your fundraising going?
Thank you for giving me like only 30 seconds, I hope. So far, we have stopped our fundraising, just because of everything that's been happening with the investment in Wilmer, the placement of the building, and our architectural design. We want to make sure that we have a project that is going to be viable for somebody to give us a donation. We've been told, I know there's a lot of talk with COVID being bad, but we've also been told by people that are in the market of helping out with grants and things like that, that a lot of money has not been used. So there is funds available out there for us, and we've been staying up on with what is available, and then also with some contacts of people that have left Wilmer, that have done very well, that are somewhat interested, but they want to see what the project looks like first.
Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you.
So we have, Sean, did you have, you were just waving?
Waving.
Okay. We have a motion to approve this contract. Any roll call?
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Vagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, approved, thank you. Agricultural land lease extension, who's that, Sean?
I was probably putting my glasses on my head, is what you saw.
Oh.
Since I got to have them now. Mayor, members of the council, Mayor Protem, members of the council. In front of you, I just realized, is not the updated action form. So I've got the updated one in front of me, I can get it to you, and I will actually do more reading than generalization than I usually do, just because it modifies a few of the overview items and some of the issues to consider. In front of you is a motion, or is a consider approval of an ag lease extension of what we're calling Tract Eight, and this property is generally located at the wastewater treatment plant for ag purposes. Under the overview, and again, I've tweaked some of the language that you'll be looking at. The lease commenced on December 14th of 2014, between the city of Wilmer and Randy Kavine, Norman Kavine, and Michael Arons for 72.8 acres of land. I know that's one of the numbers that changed in your car form. Location is generally described as the east 2,040 feet of the southeast corner, and the west 600 feet of the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter, except that partly lying westerly of County Ditch Number 19, all in Section 23 Township 119, Range 36. Further, the tenants were approved by council on October 5th of 15 to add $23,000 of their money to drain tile, at no cost to the city in exchange for extending their lease at that time an additional four years, extending the expiration date to December 15th of 2022. Further maintenance has been performed to the drainage tile on the property, approximately $5,000 paid for by the tenants, again, no cost to the city. Subsequently, the tenants have requested the lease be extended an additional four years. At the same rental rate, this new extension would expire December 15th of 2026. Alternatives to consider, and this is also a change from what you're looking at most likely, obviously, an option would be to approve the lease extension as presented. You could approve a lease extension with an increase in lease rate during the next term, or you could allow the lease to expire, in which case you'd have to rebid that section of land. Under budgetary issues, the current rent, annual rent received by the city for this tract is $10,628.8, which is approximately $146 per acre, paid in two installments to the city of Wilmer. Any questions?
Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Do we have any information with regards to average rent for comparable land?
I'm glad you asked that question, I assumed you would, and so did Brian. I was actually trying to look that up for the, the problem with comparable land is that with the railroad spur and with our airport property, our old airport property, some are large parcels, some are small, some are easily accessed, some are not. And so to get a true average is difficult. That being said, if I remember the numbers right, they were ranged from 145 to 2 or 2 and 1/4 per acre.
If I may, Mayor Protem?
Sure.
That, yeah, it was kind of a baited question, and also because I was going to ask with regards to geographical location. And location, obviously, usually, or typically, I should say, agricultural tenants are within a certain proximity to the land they lease. Would, in your opinion, would it even make sense to start over and look for new bids, or would we effectively be just wasting our time?
You know, you're exactly right, Mr. Plowman. There's only a few farmers that would bid any of our properties because they already live there or they farm nearby. The Kavines actually farm nearby this property and is in one of those cases. And so the fact that they've farmed it for this long, I don't know. I don't want to make the decision for you, but it makes some sense to leave it alone. I can't tell you, because it was before my time, actually, that the last time they bid it, if there were additional bidders, I don't know that answer, I can find that out.
Further questions? Audrey?
Just clarify for me, you don't have the, can we approve it even though we don't have the right document? Or what's wrong with what we have?
I'm sorry, you can approve it. The only thing that's incorrect with what you have is the car form. The resolution is correct, it's in there, and the supporting information is correct. So it's just the information that I presented to you that was tweaked from what you see on page 3, 335. And actually, I've got it with me, I can email it to you if you wish to see it yet tonight, but I know what your agenda looks like, too.
No, I just wanted to know if we were good to go or not, or if we should, if there was a reason we needed to, or should we wait?
No, as far as I'm concerned, all you, the only thing that's different is the way it was presented and the additional choices, and then the acreage was a little different, but that was modified on the last lease as well.
Administrator Grammatt?
Yeah, members of the city council, the, you know, the options before you are, you could counter with, you know, a higher rental rate per acre, you could rebid and you would then get the market, what the market is willing to pay. If you see on your, the car form that you have before you, they extended the lease for four years on a $23,000 expenditure, and now they're talking about a $5,000 expenditure. So the question then is, is that investment of 23,000 to extend it four years is equal to a $5,000 expenditure for four years? You know, that's a policy decision for the council. Any of those options, you know, that are presented are available to you, but if you wanted to direct staff to go back and have further discussion with the people that are renting it, that would be acceptable also. I mean, at some point, we have to make a decision, but it is, it is on the low end of the land that the city leases out. It is at the 145, which were the odd-shaped, hard-to-get-to, small parcels. This is, you know, 72 acres, it's not a small piece of dirt that you can, you know, it's not 20 acres, it's not 15, it's a reasonable field size. So you may want to just take that into consideration, but I think what we want to get to is a decision whether or not you want to continue with this lease or negotiate, you know, for... this lease, or negotiate, you know, for a higher acre rent in lieu of a four-year term, and, and their input of investment.
So Sean, I thought a few years ago, we wanted whoever rented the land to pay upfront, the full amount? That's not the?
I, I don't remember that. That could be, that could very well be. They paid upfront for their tiling, but I don't know if they paid upfront for the lease. I don't know that.
Because we did have a couple of renters that took the crop out and never paid us, so.
Okay. And I don't know if that was this particular, you know, renter lease or not, or we've got a dozen leases or different parcels that we're leasing out.
Yeah. So the only thing I would change is have the payment made before they put the seed in the ground, so March or April.
Okay.
So, it's up to the council.
I will also add, there's a map on page three fifty-one of three fifty-six, and to Councilmember Nelson's comment, this is not changing, so this is, this is correct. The unshaded portions, or unhatched portions, rather, are the parcels that they're farming. So you can see, it's not one parcel, you know, it's multiple, it's one, seven different smaller parcels that are inter, that are connected, but, but around wastewater treatment plant, the brush site, trap range, things of that nature.
Further questions? Audrey?
No, I was simply going to comment that I remember what you were addressing. I can't remember if it was a bankruptcy or something, but we ended up not receiving rent, and we changed some documentation to make sure that we didn't have that happen again, and so it would feel like that, that's something that should get incorporated so that our leases are standard.
And, and keep in mind that any changes you just decide tonight won't affect until twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, because these, these current leases expire in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah. Finance Director Olken, you have?
The leases were changed to February, this is our payment requirement.
February, okay.
And, and can I, was that for the entire payment, or half the payment?
The entire year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was this one, too?
I don't remember.
Okay.
Out interim motion to adopt resolution authorizing the mayor and administrator to execute the agricultural lease extension for tract, uh, number eight as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Further questions? Does that include the payment upfront, then?
Well, it sounds as though we adopted that into policy.
Okay, so it'll take effect when this one?
Would be February of twenty-three, if that's, if that's what you decide.
But then they have to bid it again, then.
No, that's not what the motion said. Motion said as presented, but then change it to February, I think.
Well, or whatever our policy states, because I believe we adopt, when we discussed the issue earlier, I believe we then changed the policy, and, and Mr. Olken's can, it sounds as though that is a part of our policy, so.
Okay. Roll call?
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration of interim consulting agreement for Public Works Director, Interim Engineering Design Services. Administrator Grammer?
Yeah, members of the city council, as you're all well aware, that Public Works Director Christensen is, uh, leaving employment with the city of Willmar on the first part of June, and anticipating that we won't have a, uh, new Public Works Director by that time, there's a, there's a potentially a need for an interim, given the fact that our assistant city engineer is also retired this last month, and that position is also currently vacant. We would not necessarily have a consulting contract for something like this. I talked to our city attorney regarding this, and it would be more of a part-time job, and it would be remote, almost like we went through this last year, showing up potentially as needed, but basically working remote, so there would be, you know, communications between Mr. Christensen and staff to make sure things are getting done. We also, as a side comment, we're kind of required to have a civil engineer sign off on, on plans and things of that nature in order to maintain our ability to use money from the state of Minnesota, and so given that, one option would be to contract with our consulting engineers to perform the engineering side of the position's duties, but the city en, or the consulting engineer wouldn't necessarily be supervising the public works superintendent or dealing with the people that are working in the facility maintenance area, so it's, it's, you know, either they would have to be assigned to, those duties assigned to somebody else, or coming off of COVID and knowing that we have worked remote, you know, even if it was for an hour a day, you know, to just make sure everything is, is, is being addressed, the recommendation is, would be, if you're so inclined, to, uh, look at a part-time position, working remote, and coming back as needed during the time that we're trying to fill the public work director position. The advertisement has gone out, continues to be, uh, put out to the public, and we have had one applicant up to this point in time, so we'd love to have, you know, five or ten applicants, but engineers are a hot commodity anywhere in the United States right at this point. So we're hopeful that we get a few more applicants, but in this short period in between Mr. Christensen leaving and us hopefully filling this position, he has offered to perform remote supervisory activities. You know, I don't see this as forty hours a week. I don't think Mr. Christensen feels that it's forty hours a week, but just a supervisory overview of, of operations as it pertains to the actual Public Works Department. I think we can contract with our consulting engineers for the engineering part during this time period. We have used them in the past, and they are open to entering into a contract for those services in the future.
All right, questions? Councilmember Plom?
Not so much a question, just a, just a opinionated statement. Um, sorry to see our city engineer go. Sean, you've been a great resource with the city. Thankful for the opportunity to work with you on many occasions and lots of projects. I think it is important, I think, uh, our city engineer, our departing city engineer contains a wealth of information. I think he knows a lot about this city and specifically our city's infrastructure, and I think knowledge like that, um, is valuable. At the same time, we're faced with the reality of, of the situation is what it is, and I don't know exactly, in terms of my opinion, what the future holds with regards to our engineering department as a city, what that looks like. I know a lot of, a lot of cities and municipalities are, are outsourcing all of their engineering to entire firms, and that is kind of a national trend. I don't know whether or not that's in the best interest of the city of Willmar or not, but it's probably a discussion that's going to need to be had. With that said, I also do believe that, um, having Bolton and Mink as a consulting engineer, they're local, they have participated on numerous projects, they have worked with our engineering staff on many, many different projects, and so I think when it comes to local engineering, I believe, um, that engineering firm has already, uh, they're on the ground running in terms of knowledge that, that is contained therein. They know our city's infrastructure as well. So I guess I would, I would be in favor of, and I would just kick the idea out there, maybe we wouldn't have to do, um, all of one or all of the other, maybe there's some, some hybrid that we could do, um, and I guess I would kind of like the hybrid idea of retaining Bolton and Mink for our engineering services, at the same time, maybe putting together an agreement with our exiting city engineer for as, the as-needed items as we make that transition, and we could possibly put a cost control measure in place during that time period by the hourly rate. They provide a, the hourly rates right there, so if we wanted a cost control, that's a way that we could do it, and I think that would allow for a good exchange of information between our outgoing engineer, our consulting engineer, and getting everybody up to speed, and also allow us dialogue with both in the interim, and like I said, we, if, if, if cost is our concern, um, we could put that measure in there regarding the hourly, and I think that would cover a lot of ground, but that is just my opinion, so thank you for hearing me out.
Julie?
I agree that we should, um, contract with Bolton and Mink. That's what we did before we had a city engineer, before Mr. Christensen came, but I'm just concerned about the, um, time that we're going to retain Mr. Christensen, or how are we going to determine that? Are we going to, whether it's going to be like eight hours a week, or is it going to be a dollar amount, and we almost have to do that within two weeks.
Yeah, members of the council, that was a discussion that Mr. Christensen and I had, and originally, I think we were talking like twenty hours a week, maybe halftime. Uh, since, uh, Mr. Christensen and I talked about that, I think we both said, you know, it's probably not a halftime, you know, it's, I think, checking in, you know, once, once a week, and see what, see if there are any issues, you know, one, one day, one hour possibly, so five hours a week just to see, and if we need to go up to eight hours, then, you know, we'll look at that, but I don't, I don't see it going much, you know, much higher than that unless there's a, a big problem back, you know, here. We have a great staff with our public works superintendent, you know, I think, you know, we all know that, that if we disappeared tomorrow, the public work staff would carry out their, their jobs the following day, you know, a very good department, so it's just kind of a, an oversight sort of thing, that if something pops up, we can avail ourselves of Mr. Christensen, and it might be two hours one week, and no hours the next, and eight hours the next, but it's not what you would call a real extensive use of, of his time on a daily basis.
Okay. But, and, and also, um, I don't, and what do we, do we, is there going to be a coffee? I mean, do we get to, when do we get to give you the accolades? And, and, and our well wishes, and appreciation for everything you've done? I mean, I just, we're going to, we're going to miss your, your knowledge and, and your work. Appreciated working with you. But are we, are we going to nail down not to exceed eight hours a week, or anything like that? Are we just going with the understanding that it's not going to be that much?
I, I guess I would, I would recommend that we would like do not to exceed ten hours a week at this point in time, and like I say, it may fluctuate depending on what's going on, but that's, that's a good, good start.
With knowing that it could give and take within the weeks. Then I would say the motion, a motion is to retain Bolton and Mink for our consultant services, for our engineering needs, and to retain Mr. Christensen, not to exceed ten hours a week.
Second.
Go ahead.
Got a motion and a second. I see Mr. Mayor wants to speak. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem Fagerly. I thought long and hard about any comments I was going to make in regards to this, and our public works director leaving was the worst-kept secret in Willmar. We've all known for well over a year that he was leaving, and we have one meeting prior to him being gone, and it comes up on our agenda. We have staff in place, uh, staff is going to have to step up the game, we have a lot of positions open, and I fully support the Bolton-Mink agreement, but I do not support having our, uh, current public works director continue in that role. If something were to happen in Willmar, it would take either a drive from quite a distance or an airplane fare to get him here. The agreement that I saw called for him to be paid airfare if he were to come back, and, uh, any crisis that would be needed, I'm, I'm not discounting the work that our public works director has done, but just the previous item we had on our agenda was not prepared correctly. Go back two meetings, and we had a similar situation happen. So I didn't want to bring all this stuff up, but as the mayor, you have to bring up the tough subjects. This should have been discussed minimally two months ago, and here it is, the last meeting before he's gone, and it's being talked about. We talk in the opening comments that maybe it's an hour a day, and all of a sudden we're up to ten hours a day, that's two hours a day, and what's going to keep it from going to thirty hours a week, or forty hours a week, or is it going to go back to five hours a week? These are not tangible, these are not tangible numbers that we're talking here. When Mr. Owens left our employment, we worked with it, we made it work. When Holly Wilson left, we made it work, and, uh, again, like I'll say, this is the worst-kept secret in Willmar, that, uh, Mr. Christensen was going to leave, but at the same point, we need to understand that we, as a community, um, I mean, I think, I think we're uncovering some, uh, some things we're probably going to be uncovering, and a lot of stuff in the next two to three weeks, of things that probably should have been handled differently, and, uh, as the mayor, I'm very concerned, and I think this is a step in the wrong direction.
Thank you. Audrey?
I remember we had a contract with Bolton and Mink before Mr. Christensen was, was hired, but I don't remember the supervision part of it, but I'm supportive of, of retaining Bolton and Mink to do the engineering services, and I do think that we have, we, we, the way the motion was presented, we have, um, an opportunity to have some continuity with the current, um, engineer to help us to get through the projects that we have there, so, um, I don't know about the details that were in, in the contract with that, but the way I heard it explained, up to ten hours, and so, um, but the supervision part, I don't know, does anybody remember what we did last time with Bolton and Mink on the supervision?
Yeah, I can answer that. Actually, it was Director Peterson that was given the power of signature for, for supervision of the public works department, as well as his own.
Thank you.
Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm going to ask Jared Vogi if I could put him on the spot, maybe momentarily. Thank you for being here, Jared. Um, the city has an extensive history working on projects with Bolton and Mink, and so I am comfortable moving forward, taking Bolton and Mink's services, um, working on future projects. Do you foresee, um, you know, in, in, in between now and then, the time where the city decides what our long-term engineering scope and future is going to look like, do you see any trouble working with, collaborating with some? Do you see any, uh, trouble working, um, with collaborating with some, with the, um, our departing city engineer? Do you, do you foresee any problems working together?
No problems.
And have there been any problems in the past?
There have not, no. It does not concern me.
Okay. So you believe that that would be a, a good working relationship until the time that we, uh, as a council, decide which direction our engineering department's gonna go?
Yeah, the existing public works director and I have collaborated on a number of projects throughout the city, and it's always worked well, so.
That is what I needed to know, thank you.
So Jared, since you're there, sure, can you work on your own without him too on city projects?
So, uh, and pardon me for not being fully in tune to, to this, but what I heard tonight was, uh, more of a, uh, public works and engineering discussion. But however the city of Wilmer wants us to work, um, for you guys, that's ultimately what we do. Um, so we previously, as your interim city engineer in 2012, did not supervise any public work staff. Um, certainly, I wouldn't advocate that, that we do that. But if you want us to, we could certainly help you along that process. Um, ultimately, we, um, we're an engineering services firm, and we wanna, um, serve the city of Wilmer in your engineering needs as best we can. And, uh, really aren't in the, in the business of managing public works departments. We assist them, uh, but we don't tell people how to apply so.
Thank you. Further, uh, pastor, council member Oss.
Whatever title you wanna use, Mayor Protem, I'll respond. Um, what's the timeline for this? How long is, is this agreement in place if we're retaining Mr. Christensen? Is that indefinitely? Or this is until we find someone new and we're just continue the application process? That we've only unearthed one candidate so far?
Members of the council, I don't have an answer for how long that would be if, if, you know, yeah. It depends on who applies for the position, how many apply, if they're qualified, you know, to, to do this. I think the last time it was for a fairly extensive period. Uh, and I'm talking like three months, I'm talking, I think, was it like 18 months or something like that? There was a search, uh, until it was filled. Uh, there may come a time, you know, when it, it's just determined that we don't need two hours a week, or two hours a day, or 10 hours or less a week. Uh, we may say, oh, you know, there's just not enough there. Maybe, maybe it's only two hours a week and it's just like, you know, that's not enough to continue this relationship, uh, as a part-time employee. Uh, I don't know. I don't know what the, uh, the future might bring. But, uh, this was, I think, uh, an offer by Mr. Christensen when he submitted his resignation. And it comes, uh, you know, before you, uh, I mean, while we're advertising for the position. Uh, we do have, uh, a potential, uh, employee that it might be of, of consideration for the assistant, uh, city engineer position. We'll have to play that out as, as time goes by. In which case, uh, we may not need, you know, services, uh, of Mr. Christensen after that point. It, but these are things that are happening, and we won't know until we actually, you know, know. And so it might be a one-month, uh, uh, agreement, and where it might be a, you know, it could be a, a 10-month if it's really necessary. Or we, we may find it's not necessary at all. Uh, it was just an offer that was being made. And I think the concept was, uh, we could hire Bolton and Mink to do it at a, at a higher hourly rate. And we've got the knowledge and experience of the current, uh, public works director. And, uh, you know, as proven through the COVID experience, we can get, get a lot done over the computer and on the phone. You know, we can find, you know, information and, and get it to, into the right hand. So this was just a short-term effort to try and fill, uh, the need. Uh, and if it works, fine. If it, if it doesn't work, uh, you know, it was, it was offered and it may not be acceptable. That, and that's perfectly fine too. But somebody will have to supervise, you know, somebody will have, you know, it's either Bolton and Mink or somebody else at, at, uh, working for the city will have to supervise in the absence, uh, because, you know, we've got the, the custodial facility maintenance staff reports to this position, as well as the, uh, public works, uh, superintendent, so.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Sorry, did I cut you off? Were you finished? Uh, no, I just had one more quick question. Go for it. Yeah, so again, this is looking, you're looking for, um, Mr. Christensen ultimately to supervise, uh, the staff that I just heard a second ago. If, if, I think you said that like we all disappeared tonight, public works would continue? They don't need supervision? They do need supervision?
Well, I think the, the, the city of Wilmer has set up the system, the framework. And they've said that a public works director was important in the past to have, okay? I'm saying for short-term, you know, catastrophic event. Uh, the public work superintendent can manage the department. But the department's, uh, needs the civil engineering, uh, license to stamp on plans. And if we don't have, uh, somebody on staff to do it, we have the consulting engineers to do that. Okay? So, uh, in one way, manner, or form, we need to have the civil engineering licensure, okay? And, and I believe that if we contracted with Bolton and Mink to perform the supervisory of the other, uh, departments, other than just, uh, preparing plans and specs for roads and, you know, the projects themselves, the overlay projects, it's just gonna cost us probably a little bit more. But the person would be here in town, uh, assuming that they're out of the local Bolton and Mink office.
So could you not be the supervisor of the superintendent? As the city administrator, could the city administrator not supervise the superintendent for public works?
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, that, that decision's coming. And it could be, you know, somebody sitting in a chair 30 days out or three and a half months out. And like I say, this is a Band-Aid. This is just to get us from here to there, and it's an option. If it's an acceptable option, great. If it's not, then we'll, you know, the city will, uh, appoint somebody to supervise, uh, the operations as it, you know, as we currently are staffed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, I, I guess I just wanted to iterate. My concern is, um, specifically the duration of the time where we are executing and completing, uh, construction, this year's construction projects. Um, but I would like to clarify, this is, this agreement that we would have, that we have motioned on, not voted yet. Uh, this agreement that we would have is at-will and vice versa, correct? Can be terminated anytime by either party? Okay.
Audrey?
Um, Mr. Graham, it's the motion as, as it was made, do you see that as a doable solution for right now?
I would, I would add the specific hourly rate that was, uh, located on the, the bottom so that it's authorized by the city council for that rate for a maximum hours, uh, for an indefinite period of time until such time the city council, you know, wants to, or, or the, uh, uh, public works, uh, or the part-time employee wants to, you know, sever. You know, it can go both ways too.
But the number of hours that was suggested, is that doable? That's what I was referring to.
I did a quick look at Mr. Christensen and flashed him the 10. And he, he nodded, so I'm gonna say, yeah, maximum of 10. And, uh, you know, like I said, it's gonna probably fluctuate from week to week depending on the workload and how many questions we run into. And, and just as an aside, um, this year's projects, uh, well, they're all designed. I mean, they're, they're bid out, they're going to construction. What the engineering staff does this summer is next year's project. And, you know, our staff have been working on that. Uh, then we had the assistant city engineer leave and, and now the public works, uh, director. So what we're really talking about is Band-Aid to get us to next year's project so that we can bid them out, you know, in a, in a timeline to get the projects done for next summer. And, uh, I know Bolton and Mink has a lot of staff they can draw from and, and, and throw, uh, uh, effort behind. But at the same time, we still have, uh, four people in that department that are still trying to keep it, keep it going. It's, uh, it's, uh, administrative assistants, and it's the, the, the surveyors and, and all the people that we have, uh, uh, back in that office. So, uh, you know, looking to the future, uh, really what, uh, this would be doing is, uh, monitoring the, this year's, uh, activities with the public works and facilities. And the engineering side would be working on next year's stuff. Councilmember O'Brien?
Thank you. Two questions. Um, we talked, you got one person that's possibly ready to take an interview. When are we going to interview for this position? And how long are we going to be looking for this, this position?
I talked to, uh, the HR department, uh, I believe it was last week. It's going to be open for, you know, probably another two weeks. And then, well, it's open until filled, to be quite honest. Because if we don't get any applicants, we just keep, you know, looking for them. Um, but if we get a, an adequate number of applicants, we'll start looking at their, uh, applications and interviewing as, as soon as it's, it's worth our effort.
Okay, we have one now, correct?
Yep, we just, we just have one applicant. And, uh, you know, if we can get three, would, you know, we'd start the process and start reviewing.
Okay. Next question. Didn't we have somebody that took a, took the engineering licensing test?
Internally, yes, we did have, uh, one employee take the test.
Okay.
And we, and, and, you know, as well as I do, uh, once, when it goes into the machinery, it, you don't hear what comes out until, you know, a month or so later, so.
So there's a possibility that he could be the one that could sign it for us?
It's possible, or it's very possible. Uh, he, he says he wants to go to work in Minot, North Dakota.
Could be.
You know, uh, we, I'm not gonna presuppose of what the individual wants to do. I just know that we have a potential to have an internal candidate to take over some of the slack, uh, after, uh, after we receive notice that they have their licensure and, uh, potentially that they'd be considered for the position and are willing to take the position. So it's a, it's a process, and we just have to wait until all the cogs fall into place.
All right, thank you.
Do I need to make a friendly amendment to include the hourly rate of $63.75?
I would, yes.
I will do that?
I am amicable to that.
And what about the timeframe?
I would say let's try it for, for three months and see how it works out, and then we'll make a decision.
Okay, for three months. Okay, and then I just have one question. So when we get 10 inches of rain, do we have somebody in place? And I'm looking at you, Mr. Christensen, that is gonna be able to override the wastewater treatment plant like what happened the last catastrophe?
Councilmember Ossmus, the wastewater treatment plant and crew out there, um, which is full also, by the way, I mean, the, the crew is full, are very capable of handling what needs to handle out there. Um, I think at that point, if you add to something that's specific that was directly related to engineering, you could call on whomever, the local engineer that you decide, whether it's on staff or whether it's a consultant at that time, could also help out in a, in a moment's notice.
Okay, that was a very specific Wilmer catastrophic night. And I know you were in huge role in what?
Five years ago.
Yeah, that, um, in what happened. And I'm just, I'm just wondering, who, uh, is it, do we have the capability of taking, taking care of that type of an event?
We do, and we did at that point too.
Okay.
I was more of a spokesman and cheerleader for the guys that knew what they were doing, so.
Okay, good, that's what I needed to hear.
The, the reality is, uh, what you're kinda getting to is that, uh, um, I'll be 13 hours by vehicle away. And that's definitely something to consider.
Further questions? So just, if you're only gonna work so many hours, is it gonna be up to the city to call you? Or are you gonna call in one day, one hour? Or how's that gonna work?
Um, both. I think if the city calls me and says we need help with whatever this topic is, um, then I would go, we'd go that route. Now, keep in mind too, I've got the potential for some, well, I'm working out there as well, right? And so, um, I can't tell you, as Mr. Graham said, I can't tell you it will be from eight to nine every Monday. Um, but I would say that could go both directions. If the council or administrator calls me and says we need help with this particular item, then I could, you know, uh, uh, fit that in, I could do that. If, uh, if it's a matter of checking in with the, with the, uh, four or five superintendents, or four superintendents, then I could do that as well.
Okay. Will you still be dedicated to Wilmer even though you're out there?
I think that's a trick question. I'd be dedicated to Wilmer for the, you know, not to exceed 10 hours a week.
Yeah.
Mr. O'Brien?
What we're talking about is just salary, not benefits? That we're talking about?
Just hourly wage.
Just the hourly wage?
What, was there a maximum on hours per week? Well, as a, as an employee, which the situation would be, uh, there would not be, you know, the, the healthcare benefits would not be offered. But when you talk about benefits as an employee, they're, they're in the Public Employee Retirement Association, so they're still gonna receive that in addition to the, you know, they'll have to pay into Social Security. City will have to pay into Social Security, just, just like any regular employee. Uh, but what was, is, is missing is probably the, the health insurance part. All right, so we have a motion on the table. Judy, can you read what the motion is? Julie, you wanna say it again?
Yes.
Okay.
I made the motion that we would, um, use the services of Bolton and Mink for, um, cons- consultant services for our engineering needs and retain Mr. Christensen at an hourly rate of $63.75, not to exceed 10 hours a week for three months.
All right, we're ready to vote? Vote, Clerk Thompson?
Councilmember Ossmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
No.
Ossk?
No.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
You have six ayes, two nays.
All right, passes. Okay, um, our next one's gonna be a closed session. So we're gonna take a.
Point of order. Um, Mr. Mayor Protem, I believe you missed, um, options for auditorium gun rage, number 16 on the agenda.
It's not on our agenda.
Oh, I apologize for working with an old agenda.
We'll let it go this time. We're gonna take a five-minute or 10-minute break?
Just five.
10-minute break. All right, Wilmer City Council is back from recess. Um, next item is to determine asking price for real property proposed to be sold by the city. And this is gonna be closed pertinent to public, uh, statute 13D, dot 05 subdivision 3, C1 and 3. So we'll need a motion to, uh, close this.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Second?
Second. We have roll call?
Councilmember Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ossk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman? Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bakerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, this is for asking price for real.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Parcels that we are looking to sell. One is entirety of Block 3, lots 1, 2, and 3, within Block 2 of the Wilmer Industrial Park, Fourth Edition. Do I have to do the parcel number to them? And this is the second one, then?
There's three total we need to describe.
Oh, okay.
And then also make sure to save the statute before we go back into closed session.
Okay. And then parcel 959175570, that's 13 acres, entirety of Block 3, and lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 2 of the Wilmer Industrial Park, Fourth Edition. Is there one more, then? Okay, where's Block 3 on that?
We might have all been read together. Entirety of Block 3, lots 1, 2, and 3, within Block 2 of the Fourth Edition, Wilmer Industrial
Okay, yeah, Block 3, lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 2, Wilmer Industrial Park, Fourth And then the 91 acres? Which other one, then?
And then 959175570 is the 13 acres.
Okay, 959175570, 13 acres.
And then the last thing we need to identify, the statutory process that allows us to go into closed session.
Okay. Pursuant to Minnesota statute, section 13D, 0.5 subdivisions 3, C. 1, and 3. We're in closed session.
Now, can you take a motion to reclose the meeting?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to close this meeting. Roll call?
Councilmember O'Brien?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bakerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Okay, we're in closed session.
Mayor Protem, last time you went into closed session, I was dropped from the call, so can you make sure staff leaves me on the call this time, please?
All right.
Be recorded.
All right, we're back from a closed session for the Wilmer City Council on May 17. It is 10:48. Get a motion to reopen?
I'll make that motion to reopen.
Second.
Roll call?
Mayor Protem, we don't need to vote.
Sure, okay. Okay, we're ready to go.
Make a motion to consider a resolution approving a non-binding letter of intent with CBRE for the proposed sale of city-owned Block 3 and lots 1, 2, and 3 within the Wilmer Industrial Park, Fourth Edition, and authorizing the city administrator to sign the same on behalf of the city.
Second.
We got a motion and a second for their discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bakerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, thank you. Next one is Community Pride. Is there any announcements?
I don't think I have any.
Tom?
Yeah, I called Gary Manzer, is that how you pronounce his name? I unfortunately ran into a big rock in Wilmer South yesterday with my boat, and it was about 30 feet outside of the buoy that was marked. So I called Gary right away at 8:00 this morning, and he had his crew out there immediately to find that rock that I hit, and so kudos to that crew, because that was a big rock. Luckily, I was not going very fast.
Councilmember Osk? Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Plowman?
Aye, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson? All right, motion to adjourn? So moved. Is there a second to adjourn?
Second.
We need a roll call for that, or we are adjourned? We are adjourned. Thank you.